Okay. Welcome, everybody, for the Committee on Government Operations. We'll just get going right away without much to do. First up, we have seven bill 1135 relating to procurement. First up, we have Ryan Sakuta, Government Relations Director, General Contractors Association of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair. Oh, this is a vice chair member of the committee, but he's just chair. So GCA is in support of the measure. We agree that a system should deter frivolous appeals. However, we believe that legitimate appeals are part of a healthy procurement system. It's essential that the procurement code promotes fair and ethical procurement. The purpose of this bill is to adopt safeguard language in place that every state uses to prevent the chilling effect of deterring legitimate appeals on large projects. The opposition to this measure last year said that the law is new and we need to wait until we have proof that there would be a reduction in administrative appeals on large projects. So we warned that there would be no appeals on large projects, and we specifically called attention to projects valued at 10 million or more. There were zero appeals in 2022 on large projects. In fact, there are only three filed bid protest decisions published online by the Office of Administrative Hearings for the whole of 2022. And that only administrative appeal that was actually decided by OAH Sanes Maris required the posting of nearly $60,000 bond just to allow the appeal to be heard. So the more public monies there are at stake, the less possibility there is for oversight, because the higher the cost will be for bidder to have a chance of being heard. So again, this is a conforming amendment to include safeguard language that should have been included in the measure two years ago that removed the bond cap. So Hawaii is the only state that requires a bond that does not have this language. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your testimony. Tim Lyons, President, Subcontractors Association of Hawaii. I believe we've got written in support. Says it's in person. Is he here? Nope. Okay, next up, we have Dale Yanita, President of S&amp;M Sakamoto Incorporated, written in support. Marian Arasato, Ralph Anoy Corporation Limited, written in support. It says we have Anna Oshiro, Damon K. Leon, Kupchak, Hester, on Zoom.
President Chair.
You're not here?
Oh, Chair.
No, okay, no. Sorry, sorry to hear you. Okay, next up, we have Lily Shintani, Alan Shintani Incorporated. Hey, they're on behalf of Fred Kim, written in support. That's all we have on 1135. Members, any questions of Mr. Sakuta, since I think he's the only testifier here? Yeah, well, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, SB 1138. First up, Bonnie Kapu Kua, State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Bonnie Kapu Kua, Acting Administrator, State Procurement Office. We stand on written testimony in support of this bill.
Okay.
And available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the table. Appreciate you being here. We have Lee from Director Snipin, the State Department of Transportation, or Tammy. Lee?
Thank you, Chairman Kelby, Vice Chair Gabbert, and Member. Thank you. So the Department of Transportation supports this bill that amends Section 103d, 303. I think the statute currently says that our proposals are to be open to avoid disclosure and the award to be made, the basis on which the award was made to be disclosed. We interpreted that to mean disclosure of the evaluation scores. We oftentimes get UIPA requests to disclose proposals before they are either awarded or before the contract is executed. So I think having this provision in the statute is going to be beneficial.
Okay. Thank you for being here and testify. Appreciate it. But that's all we received, I believe, on 1138. Anybody in the audience or the world of Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, member question? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, 1129. Again, Bonnie Kapu Kua, State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, again. The State Procurement Office stands on written testimony in opposition to this bill and available for questions.
Thank you for being here again. We also have, again, State Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chairman Kelby. The DOT stands in support on its written testimony. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you for being here again. Appreciate it. Tim Lyons, once again, President, Subcontractors Association of Hawaii, in opposition, but I believe he's offering amendment to try to address his concerns. Next up, SB 1129, Jared Silva, Individual, Opposition, Written. And finally, we have late from Stacy Aldrick, State Librarian, Written in Support. That's all we have on 1129. Member question of DOT? If not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. Senate Bill 415, Jade Butai, Director of Labor and Industrial Relations.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kelby, Vice Chair Gabbert, Senator Benoventura, Jade Butai for DLIR. We stand on our testimony in strong support. This measure will provide another remedy for employees in the construction industry to recover wages.
Okay, thank you for being here. Appreciate you being here, Director. And next up, Tim Lyons, Subcontractors Association of Hawaii, in opposition. I apologize for the earlier comment. This is the one that he's offering a possible amendment to address their concerns. Ryan Sakuta, Government Relations Director, GCA.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the committee, GCA stands on its written testimony, offering comments requesting amendments.
Okay, thank you for that. We appreciate your comments and your proposed amendments. Nathaniel Kinney, Y Regional Council of Carpenters.
Good afternoon, Chair. We stand in our strong support of this bill and are in agreement with some of those amendments that we sent out as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, we also have Chris Delamary, Pacific Resource Partnership.
Good morning, Chair. Pacific Resource Partners, she stands on this testimony in strong support.
Okay, thank you so much. Hawaii Lessett, Labor, Employers, Cooperation Education Trust, Written in Support. We have individual Natalie Owassa, Written in Opposition, and we have late from Malcolm Baracarsi Jr., Associated Builders and Contractors, Hawaii Chapter, Written in Opposition. And I believe that's all we have on 415. Members, are there any questions of the parties? Okay, next on, we'll move on to the... Oh, I'm sorry, keep doing this. Anybody in the audience or the world of Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none. Now we'll move on to SB 1416. First up, Les Condo, State Auditor, Office of the Auditor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Les Condo, I'm the State Auditor. My office strongly supports the intent of the bill. My office is a legislative service agency. Our work is either dictated or requested by the legislature, the vast majority of it. I think some of the requirements in the bill or the other agencies that are listed in the bill are not similar to how my office operates. So we suggested a revision to the, to the bill that would be specific to the performance audits that my office issued, but it would require hearings or information briefings, which we think is a really meaningful process. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your proposed amendments. We also have Louis Salavaria, Director, Budget and Finance, Written, Comments. That's all we received on 1416. Last call, anybody in the audience or Zoom world wishing to testify? Seeing none, member question of the auditor? Nope, seeing none. We'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 1253. First up, Chair Park, Director, OIP.
Yeah, the Chair, Vice Chair, and Members. I'd like to support, I stand in support of this bill. I would like to suggest, however, that the bill be amended to take into account the amendments that the League of Women Voters suggested and we agreed to in 2022 on a similar bill. And that is now found in Senate Bill 719. It was discussed by the SCR 192 Working Group that the legislature asked us to develop some legislation, but it wasn't included as part of that package. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you for being here. Let's see, Senate Bill 1253, Sterling Marina, President, Y Society, Chapter of Journalists. We're gonna, let's see, Opposition, Brian Black, Executive Director of the Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest. No, actually, I'm glad you're here. Got a question for you later.
Oh.
That's on the way.
How are you doing? Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Benoventura. Brian Black, Executive Director for Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest, Stand on written testimony in opposition to this bill as drafted.
Okay.
Available for any questions.
Appreciate that big time. Thanks for being here. Appreciate that too. Next up, Doug Meller, League of Women Voters of Hawaii, Written in Opposition, however, does have some amendments to offer. Blake Oshiro, Commission to Baron Uniform Legislation, Written Comments. Seeing as in person, nope. Let's see, we have three from Individuals. Corinne Solomon, writing in opposition. Andrew Crossland, writing in support, and Vivek Pathela, writing in support. We also have late from Jerick Maderos Garcia, Individual in Opposition. That's all we have in written testimony submitted before the hearings. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify or in Zoom land? Seeing none, member question? I have a quick question. Who, Brian, is you? Oh, there you are. Do you get a chance to look at the League of Women Voters' testimony at all?
Yeah, I'm aware of it. We don't have a position about that.
Do you, if we were to amend the bill as they asked us to do, if we were for further consideration down the line, would that change your opposition like it says it would do theirs?
So what we've done in the past when bills like that have been introduced is we just don't testify and take a position either way. So the opposition would go away.
It would not, it would go, it would go away. Okay, I really appreciate your feedback on that. Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Next up, Senate Bill 828. First up, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke, Office of Lieutenant Governor or Representative. Oh, there he is.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Kelby. Members of the Committee, Riley Fujisaki on behalf of the Office of the Lieutenant Governor, and we're here just to stand on our written comments, our written testimony in strong support of the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here. We do appreciate you being here. Let's see, next up, Candace Park, Deputy Attorney General. Thanks, Candace.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the Committee, you know, I think you skipped to SB 828. I think you skipped SB 1253 and SB 991.
Oh, well, my bad. We'll go back to that one. Just let's finish up on that one. No, we're not. Yeah, there's something wrong with my grid here, but let's just finish up on 828.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that there needs to be an appropriation out of the fund in order for the Lieutenant Governor's Office to spend money from the fund. So we suggested appropriation language in our testimony.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate that. Next up, we have Louis P. Salavaria, Department of Budget and Finance, with comments. Okay, we also have Natalie Owassa, Individual. She has comments as well. And we also have Department of Health with comments. Oh, there they are.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Susan Fernandez, Deputy Director of Health, and we're really here, Jean Lucas here, to answer any questions on process. We stand by our testimony as is, but it's a complicated process.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. We do appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to testify on the measure or in the world of Zoom? If not, member, do we have a question of the testifiers?
I just want to make sure. We're on 828.
Yes, there was a problem with the testifier grid here, so I apologize for accidentally jumping ahead here, so.
So I have a question of the Department of Health. I apologize, but I don't have your written, oh, I see the written testimony. So the Department of Health also issues affidavits?
We begin the process at Chingika and at the acting registrar. So we begin the process because people that come in, they request either a birth, marriage, or death certificate. So we prepare that, and they have to do it by mail. So we prepare all of that documentation. We notarize it, we wet sign it by the registrar, and then we package it all up to the Lieutenant Governor or First Circuit Court, depending on if it's a HAY or a non-HAY country.
So who, who collects the money? You folks or?
We collect the money for the certificate. So it's 1250 for a birth or marriage, or $10 for a death. And then they're supposed to send in the dollar to the Office of Lieutenant Governor and $3 for First Circuit Court if it's a non-HAY country. So, and we package all that in a self-addressed stamped envelope, and we package all that and we take it over to Lieutenant Governor.
So you folks will get, will be collecting that, if this bill is passed, for $10?
It would be the Office of Lieutenant Governor in that bill. But we would like to work with them on the process and the amount, because nothing, nothing is in Hawaii, we buy statutes on the advocacy process. So that would be really good if we could work to kind of get a whole package together of the amount. We can, let's find $10 to the Office of Lieutenant Governor, but I think the First Circuit also, they, they need, but we don't do that many non-HAY. It's maybe less than 50 a year.
Okay, so my concern is the super long length of time we just even get these birth certificates, marriage certificates, and the like. And if we, you folks have to create these packages before it gets sent out to the LG, if folks don't get extra staff.
Yeah, that would be really good, but to get extra staff. And we also, we also don't get any money for the advocacy process.
For doing, okay.
Yeah, we only get the dollar for the certificate right now, out of every process.
Out of every process?
Yeah.
And that's why it's taking so long to have extra staff. We're, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna request an appropriation on the Department of Health.
See, I don't worry, because actually, that's your truly honor, so I'm glad you're gonna, I'm gonna include you in the final disposition of the measure. Okay, we're gonna go back, members, everybody, to, oh, that concludes the testimony. Members in the audience or Zoom wishing to testify, we had the questions, okay. We have a problem with our printers, so it actually skipped 991. So we're gonna go ahead and go back to 991. With your indulgence, I have to manually call up the testifiers. First up, we have Office of Information Practices.
Good afternoon. OIP has a lot of comments on this bill, and I won't read it all. You have our comprehensive testimony that talks about the potential effects of this bill. But I think that the bill is based on the wrong premise in that it would, the bill would actually end up having the opposite effect of making record requests less readily available. Record requests, as the objective data shows, are already free for 85 to 90% of the people. And the typical requester is getting the record request in eight workdays. If you follow this partial implementation of a Federal Freedom of Information Act or FOIA rule, procedural rule, it could, you could get the same results as FOIA, which means that requesters are waiting months, if not years, for their FOIA request to be fulfilled. And this public interest waiver in this bill is not only a waiver of the fees, but also of the first 100 copying costs. So this bill goes beyond even the bill, Senate Bill 3252, that was vetoed by Governor Ege last year, and doesn't correct any of the concerns that the agencies had in that bill. Unfortunately, it also doesn't have, and we didn't get as a result of the veto, the two positions that OIP really needs to do its increasing workload. And we hope that it will consider amending this, the bill, to provide for us so that we can do all the increasing work that we're getting. By the way, the public interest waiver would only apply to like nonprofit news organizations, not to for-profit media companies. And when you just plop it into what OIP already has, it really won't work very well. OIP's current rules were adopted back in 1999, based on cost information from 1996. So we drafted new rules that would have updated it in 2017 and posted everything on our website, including a PowerPoint presentation, a survey, and the survey results of the public's reaction to it. But before we could proceed to the next step of formal room making, we had to submit our draft rules to the AG's office, where it still remains. Because of inflation, we would want to take another look at it if we could and maybe come back to the legislature in the future that would also address some of your concerns here and explain why and why not. But I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, thank you for being here. We appreciate both the written and the verbal. Don't worry, it's okay. I'll be able to get my notes in order. Senate Bill 991, Keith Reed, Comptroller, Department of Accounting and General Services. Okay, thank you so much for being here, Director. Appreciate it. Don Chang, Chairperson, DLR.
Hello, Chair, Member of the Committee. I'm not Don Chang, but I am representing DLR. And we sent our testimony opposing the bill. Were there any?
All the questions are after, after we're done.
Very good. Thank you very much.
We have Louis Salavaria, Department of Budget and Finance, Written with Comments. Kathy Betts, Director of Department of Human Services. They have comments as well. Nadine Ando, Director, GCCA.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Nadine Ando here on behalf of Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, and we stand on our written testimony, offering comments and concerns about this bill.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up, Joseph Trinidad, Major, Honolulu Police Department.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Joseph Trinidad, Honolulu Police Department, and we stand by our submitted written testimony.
With comments, correct, sir? Okay, thank you so much for being here on Zoom. Thomas Williams, Executive Director, Employment Retirement System. Let's see, they have comments. We have Joe Kent, Executive Vice President, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. They have comments as well. Brian Black?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Wakai, Senator Benoventura. Brian Black, Executive Director for Civil Beat Law Center for the Public Interest. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about this bill and misstatements about what the scope of it is. And I'm happy to answer questions that the committee may have about that to the extent that there are concerns about this version of the bill versus the version that went through last year and that Governor Ege vetoed. The House Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct looked at these issues, evaluated the veto, and they, they did issue a proposal that was, you know, intended to address some of those concerns that Governor Ege had raised, specifically about, in the preamble, about explaining why it is that the scope of this provision is very limited in nature and it doesn't affect most requests. So I'll leave it at that, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you for being here, Brian. Appreciate it. Sterling Marina, again, Y Chapter Society, Professional Journalist, Written in Support. Nancy Cook Lauer, Publisher of all Hawaii news. They are in support. Ryan Kawalani Ozawa, Publisher of a Hawaii bulletin, Written in Support. Doug Meller, League of Women Voters of Hawaii. They too have written in support. Andrew Crossland, Individual, Support. Tiffany Hunt, Individual, in support. And finally, we have Robin Miyajima, Vivek Pathela, and Corinne Solomon. They are all written in support. Are they here to testify? Seeing none. That's all we have on 991. For people who've signed up, is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom who would like to testify on 991? If not, members, are there any questions? Yes, please. A microphone, sorry.
Sure. Oh, I P. So, you know, this, this bill talks about copy fees and limiting up to 100 pages or so. Don't you folks, when, when there is a request for records, don't you folks just provide it in digital format? I mean, so why do we need to have like copy fees?
Yes, if it's provided, if it's already in digital format and it's provided in digital format, there aren't copy fees. But maybe there might be if it's not in digital format and you have to, you know, create it into digital format and send it to them or if, if they want it in, in, in digital format. Plus, the copying fees also refer to other types of fees, like MAPs or different things. And this copying fee isn't for everybody. The waiver in here is only for the waiver in the public interest if it's made by somebody who is not acting primarily in the commercial interest, which is why I say the, the copying fee waiver and the search review segregation fees waiver for the public interest would only benefit pretty much nonprofit organ, media organizations and not the for-profit media organizations that... So I don't understand why. I know why they did it, because they took this language from FOIA, not all of the language, but they took any public interest waiver language that is in FOIA that allows agencies to provide an additional waiver in part or total. This bill, though, says for the fees, is a complete fee waiver using that FOIA language. But it doesn't work in Hawaii's structure, because we don't have the three different levels of fees, three different categories of fees that FOIA has. We have, our, our system is very simple. Everybody pretty much pays the same thing. There is a $30 waiver, and for the media or people acting in the public interest, there's a $60 waiver. So they get more. Now, we have been looking at these fees to bring it up to date, because it's been, what, 27 years or more since they have been increased, and I think inflation has gone up in that period of time. So we were going to increase the fees, but at the same time, our 2017 draft rules proposed to increase a waiver, a flat waiver of $400 a year for everybody to keep the fees for record requests pretty much free for just about everybody, because that $400 a year would even cover one complex record request based on the amount, average amount of time that agencies say they take to respond to typical personal records or complex record requests. So we had an objective basis for determining what the fee levels should be and, and the waiver. This is kind of arbitrary, and it just takes one thing out of FOIA and tries to plop it into our rules, which won't work. And I think it has the opposite effect that's gonna hurt the public ultimately. I don't really want to go to the FOIA system where it's taking those agencies months, if not years, to fulfill record requests. Here, we're doing the to be done within 10. The agencies are doing a pretty good job of providing records on time and for free. So I don't see why we need this. And especially, I don't see why you're telling OIP to establish rules when you're saying it's already at this level. I mean, if you want to do it, you can do it in the statute, but if you want us to do it by rules and have it mesh with the rest of the rules and some of the other problems that we have, such as with manifestly excessive interference with agency operations, then I think you need to give us more of a free hand to, to make everything fit properly. And we have reached out to the public in our previous draft rules, even though we weren't required to do so. They haven't even gone to room making.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, anything else?
Any other questions?
No.
Yes, please.
For Mr. Black? From what I gather, this bill benefits civil beat, correct? Who else benefits it?
No, 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 that's a complete misstatement to say that it's, it doesn't benefit for-profits. The issue, the standard, there's, there's a whole standard under the FOIA system that's adopted by this bill, and it is a multi-factor test. One of the factors is the primarily commercial interest that OIP referred to. But that doesn't exclude, for example, for-profit newspapers. And the reason it doesn't is because when you look at the precedent that it's coming from, the FOIA precedent, FOIA, the Department of Justice, is very clear that media entities are not acting primarily in commercial interest. So that's very clear already off the bat that it is not just for nonprofit media entities. And it benefits, if you look at the factors, I would say that for the most part, it benefits media outlets and nonprofit organizations that are intended to use the information to broadly educate the wider public. It's focused specifically on that. We have a modified version of this standard already under our public interest. It's not really a waiver, it's a discount. But under the public interest discount that currently exists, and only about 5%. And again, it's not just Civil Beat. And I would just iterate that I don't represent Civil Beat. We operate independently, we're separate. But it is about 5% of all requests that are made every year qualify for this public interest request. So it's a very small number of requests that would qualify for this waiver.
So help me understand, if I'm the star advertiser, I could take advantage of this as well?
Yes, for sure. As long as the information is being, like, it meets all the other factors, right? It's about government operations. It's, the star advertiser intends to broadly disseminate that information to the public. In other words, they're going to report on the information. And I'm sorry, I don't remember all the different factors, but those are the various factors that are issues. I think there's like six of them.
Can you tell me, last year, how much did Civil Beat pay in record fees?
I have no idea. Again, we operate independently, so.
Can you get that for us?
I could look at the data that exists, that OIP collects information. And I can look at that information to see if it's reported. The problem is that information, the agencies don't fill it out properly all the time. So they don't always record when money is paid.
Cheryl, how much did you guys charge Civil Beat last year?
It's not their charges.
Yeah, we didn't charge anything, but one agency, I think it was a county agency, reported that they charged a Civil Beat reporter $1,005 in fees for a request that took increments, you know, was done in increments because it was a big record request that they had to go through and redact the record first. So I know that because out of over 4,300 or so total requests that were made last year, there were only three that were charged over $1,000. And that was one of them. And the highest one was for like $2670 or something like that, charged to a commercial aviation company. And when he talks about the FOIA standards, that's not what we operate under. We have our, OIP's rules are different from FOIA. We do not have the three different categories that FOIA has, one of which recognizes, you know, the as falling within. And so all those standards are really different from how we operate here in Hawaii. So I don't think that would be completely at all relevant to this. We're looking at the language of the law and the way we would interpret it is you have to be operating not primarily in the commercial interest. You know, so how is that?
Okay, I don't want to get into all of the legal nuts and bolts of it. I just look at, I mean, can Civil Beat afford a couple hundred, I mean, a couple thousand dollars for record requests? I mean, if we were to say that you no longer have to pay this, is that going to, like, put it into Civil Beat?
It's not, I don't think it's a question of putting it into any particular media outlet. I wouldn't be surprised if that $1,000, again, I don't know what they did, but I wouldn't be surprised if that $1,000, for example, was used in their series last year on arbitration proceedings and all of the issues with the police and how their arbitration proceedings work. I mean, that was a whole series of articles about that. They can do that and other media outlets can do that. But many of them can't afford $100 here, $200 there constantly in order to run those types of accountability articles. And that's the whole purpose of this public interest standard, is to make sure that the information that's being requested is actually serving the public interest and it's being used to educate the public in a way that otherwise would not happen because those costs will be too high.
And we do have our own public interest standard in Hawaii, which is different from what he's proposing, which in some respects is even broader than what is being proposed in this bill.
It's a $60 discount.
No, I'm not talking about the fee. I'm talking about the standards.
Okay, I don't want you to argue after that.
Yeah, yeah.
Although I enjoy it.
Does every request result in a story?
Many, many do. Again, operating independently, I don't know all of the requests that Civil Beat makes. I don't know all the requests that media outlets make. But my understanding from working with those folks, with all the media outlets, is that when they make a request, they're doing it for purposes of trying to follow up, verify information, and understand what's going on. And if they can't get that information, then they're not going to do a story.
Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate the fact that the state needs to hand over information. I have a slight problem with fishing expeditions just to get information. And ultimately, the tax payers of Hawaii pay for requests that are just frivolous. And that's where I have a problem. Of all entities, of Civil Beat, it's all about accountability and transparency. It just kind of throws me for a loop here that somehow you're asking for a free ride when it comes to record requests of government. I mean, this whole bill doesn't just, it doesn't make sense to me.
So, and I can respond to that if that's okay. So with respect to fishing expeditions, the people that are making these requests, that are interested in getting information to publicly disclose it, they're interested in getting the information in a timely way. I mean, as you can imagine, if something's not news-worthy, it's going to come like six months to a year later. So the people that are interested in this information are typically not people that make fishing expedition requests. And to the extent that they do and they receive responses that, that right now, or they're saying, like, it's going to be, you know, $2,000, it's going to be some, like, amount that they're not willing to pay, that just sort of stops the conversation. But what can happen when there is a waiver is that there's still, there's going to be a dialogue because those folks want that information in a timely manner. So in order to get it in a timely manner, because the agencies can delay it, they're allowed, when there's a fishing expedition, they're allowed to, they can focus on their real work, right? That is the priority. And that's already in the rules, that they're allowed to focus on their real work. And it's only when they can get around to it, spend a reasonable amount of time on it, that they can disclose the information. And that's, that for a reporter or for a nonprofit that wants to disclose information is not going to be acceptable, that they're going to get it in six months or a year or whatever. So they're going to be looking to narrow their requests and make sure that they're not fishing expeditions. And they can get information in a timely way. So there is sort of a mutual interest in making sure that there are not fishing expeditions for the folks that qualify for this work.
Okay, so I'm just sorry. Here's my question. Since not all the agencies are represented by OIP here. And my concern is if we remove this cap and there are a number of, not necessarily Civil Beat, but there are a number of nonprofits who serve the public interest, are we going to start dedicating employees to go through and redact and search without compensation? What I'm concerned with, okay, is the Department of Health request, for instance, when Obama became president and there were tons of requests for their, for the birth records. And it basically stopped a lot of regular civilians who needed their own birth certificates and their own death certificates to be able to process their own work. So that's my concern is, I understand the need, okay, for transparency. But if we're going to start not charging for searches or discounting search and redaction work, are we then opening the floodgates that prevent regular civilians from getting work done?
That can very well happen. It did happen during the Obama records.
We passed a law for Vex's request.
No, we didn't.
We didn't pass a Vex's request.
Yes.
No, no.
Pretty sure.
It was sunsetted. So it has to be reinstated. So there is no law. And that's part of the problem because, you know, there is no way to do, to prevent requests from manifestly and excessively interfering with agency operations. One of the few ways is by saying, if you want all of this, then pay for it. And we have, you know, we, current law is too low. Our draft rules would have increased the waiver and allowed for a lot of these media requests to be free for the year. But it would have put a cap on how much, you know, somebody can keep asking an agency for records. And in the FOIA world, you can have a million-page request. You got to go through that. That takes resources. The agencies don't have that. The counties don't have that kind of funding. So if you're going to be passing something like this that could very well increase those types of fixatious requests, then you have to do something about funding the state and county agencies or find another way to prevent those kinds of requests from being made.
Real quick, before, you heard her comments about how OIP operates under admin rules that are different from FOIA? And particularly, there's a difference in the commercial interest. Commercial media, this brought up by my colleague here. I mean, so can we, I guess, respond to the OIP's statement that under the OIP rules, that for-profit media outlets would not, would be charged, I guess, to get records?
Yeah, so OIP, back when it adopted its rules, it's the only, we're the only jurisdiction that said, made any statement along the lines that a for-profit media entity is acting in commercial interest. Like I said, the Department of Justice interpreted the language and said, no, media entities are not acting in commercial interest. Now, what's different about this language that's in the proposal is it directly takes from the FOIA standard and is intended to adopt the FOIA standard as it concerns public interest. So it's adopting the DOJ factors, the DOJ analysis of those factors, all of the FOIA precedent about how the public interest waiver works. So there is a lot of case law and precedent that comes with the specific language that is used in this proposal.
So if this bill were to pass, then the current rules of OIP, which would, I guess, prohibit the star advertiser, naming them, picking on them, you know, or making them just be local mine, from making those requests, they could go ahead and make the request basically without cost, right?
And it's, that's actually, yes. But also, I would say that despite this whole discussion about for-profit versus nonprofit, OIP has said that even under the standard that it currently exists, now the star advertiser qualifies for the public interest standard. So it's not as though they don't already qualify for the discount that exists currently. But this would make it clearer by adopting the federal standard. It would make it clear what the factors are and what has to be met and what a high bar it is to be acting in the public interest to get this work.
Okay, final, final thought. Do we do have some other bills?
You know, you cannot expect to take the FOIA language and interpretation and apply it to Hawaii's system. We are totally different. We do not have the three-tiered system on which FOIA's rules and this public interest waiver is based. You know, there is a specific tier in FOIA for representatives of the news media. We don't have that distinction here in Hawaii.
Wouldn't that bill break that distinction?
Well, it still says, I'm going to look at the statutory language of the law, which says that it cannot be primarily in the commercial interest. So how would you interpret that if you're looking at the law? We're looking at it saying, you're giving only nonprofit news media this waiver, not for-profit. That's how we would look at it.
Okay, well, that's an interpretation. But no, thank you so much. This has probably been one of the most engaging bills. Thank you for being here. We do appreciate it. Let me get my notes caught up. Okay, members, with your indulgence, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is Senate Bill 1509. Stop me if I'm wrong. Louis Salavaria, Department of Budget and Finance, written comments. Keith Regan, DAGs.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, thank you so much. Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii, Department of Accounting and General Services. We do stand on our written comments in support of this measure. However, we're just asking that an amendment to our testimony be made. If you look on page two of our testimony, there's item number four, which reads, "Lastly, the State Archives already maintains a trust account for the deposit of federal nonprofit and private grants. As such, we respectfully request that 94-8.1." It should be three and four, so striking two and three and replacing it with three and four. Chair, Vice Chair, again, we stand on our comments and our testimony as presented and amended.
Okay, thank you for correcting that. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, let's see. Deborah Halbert in Clem Guthrie, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, I'm Debbie Halbert, representing the University of Hawaii. And we stand on our testimony but are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you so much. And you two have an amendment to offer on this bill as well?
Yes, in our testimony. No changes to our testimony, though, on what we're requesting in terms of.
I was wondering if you suggested that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And then we have Lay from Lima, Kimoana Kane, Individual, in support. Let's see. That is all we have on 1509. Anybody in the audience in the world of Zoom who should testify on the measure? Seeing none, members, questions? I guess a quick question of DAGs would be the most appropriate. Oh, no, Archivist is here, actually. Yeah, perfect. And just a real quick one. How will this affect the funding for other state funding archives?
As far as I know, it shouldn't. To be clear, the wording in there allows us to expend fees for the digitization of photographs and photographic materials out of the special fund. So in essence, we would not be required to use our general fund monies, which we currently do, to do this analog-to-digital conversion. The special fund as originally written was exclusively for existing digital records and their preservation. So we're looking to move that back a little bit to actually open up more funding capability for us using special funds rather than having to rely almost exclusively on grant funding.
Okay, do you see BNF's testimony with the federal funds? It should be separated out as well.
We can do that.
You can do that. So you can create a sub-account then, which would only contain the federal funds?
Well, that was originally what the trust was for, because we've been getting it from nonprofits and the like. And so spinning up another one specifically for any federal funds we may receive will move in that direction.
And final comment, UH's testimony on their amendments. Have you had a chance to look at them?
I did. And I want to make it very clear that this is not meant in any way, shape, or form to impinge on any other archive's ability to pursue their mission statements. And again, the wording as it exists in this bill does not change our mission one bit. We were founded in 1905 to collect the public archives. That's our founding legislation. And we've done that for 118 years. That includes photographs, photographic records, cultural manuscript collections. We've done all of that for a century and more. This just allows us to expend those special funds to do that analog-to-digital conversion.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Your feedback on it. And was there any other questions? Well, the Archivist, Molly's here. If not, we'll move on to Senate Bill 811 for Sub Jay Bhutai, Department of Labor and Industrial Relations.
Hello, Chair McElby, Vice Chair Gilbert, and Members of the Committee. We stand on our testimony in support of the intent and offering comments.
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate it. Kathy Betts, Director of DHS, State of Hawaii, comments as well. We have Kitayashi, Department of Education Superintendent. They have comments. University of Hawaii, Deborah Halbert.
Ando. Good afternoon, again. We stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there somebody on Zoom that I? If not, we'll go on to Lisa Ryan Gill, Coordinator and Refounder of Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Lisa Ryan Gill with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We represent over 25 immigrant-led and immigrant-serving organizations across the state of Hawaii. And we've been working with the Filipino Caucus to put forward this bill on data desegregation, which has been a national movement that we which has been a national movement that we've seen. So the last time a bill like this was filed was twenty twelve. And we haven't seen any real movement uh in that direction since um since that bill was filed, except for HCR one seven five. Um, the reason we bring this forward is right now we lack a standardization on data disaggregation, which as we saw during COVID, is extremely important. If you only look at the category um as designated now, that is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander as one group. Obviously, that doesn't make sense for the state of Hawaii in in order to be able to look at public health data. If we had not started disaggregating data within smaller pockets on different teams and different departments, we wouldn't have known that folks from Kofa nations had higher rates of COVID. We wouldn't have known that Filipinos in in Kaliki at different times had higher rates of COVID. And so what we're trying to do is move the ball forward on a standardization. So we support we support the bill. Uh we've offered some amendments at minimum, uh some updated language, striking Indo from before Chinese. Disaggregating Mycinese since that's a nation or a national and not a racial or ethnic identity. We've also incorporated uh some of the purpose and the task force that comes out of um the House Resolution one seventy-five that was passed in twenty twenty-one, asking for a task force really to look at the what we don't want to do is departments to be to feel like they are mandated to do all of this work that they don't have the funding for or the knowledge to do. And so what we want to do is identify best practices uh and try to really train up and expand the work that is being done well right now. And we have coordinated with, like we said, the Filipino Caucus. We have talked with Councilmember Kia Aina, um who has done a lot of work when she was at the federal level on this issue, as well as Papa Ololokahi. So we've been trying to bring all stakeholders together.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here in person and testifying. We really appreciate it. We have uh Mary Kay Oaks, Hawaii Worker Center. Okay, they have written testimonies for. We have several individuals, Cindy Nowilis, Tadi Espam, Patricia McManaman, Mildred, Assencian, Naomi, Somos, all have written in support. Are any of them here or on Zoom? Oh, Pat, we see you. Go ahead and please.
Good afternoon, um Chair and Vice Chair. I'm uh writing on behalf of the Hawaii Friends's Civil Rights. We stand in very strong support of this measure. I won't um echo um uh Liza's um earlier comments other than to um underscore we um support them um by and large. Um I I would say that um passing this bill would reduce some of the angst that civil beat um spoke about perhaps um and their access to public records. And and but, you know, generally, without good data, um government cannot make good policies. And as echoed by Liza, we saw that certainly during COVID at the opening of the um season of COVID, if you will, we had the then Director of Health saying that there would be no racial disparities. Well, lo and behold, even though we weren't tracking any racial disparities at that time, it became clearly evident a year, a year and a half into COVID, um that there were indeed racial disparities. I recommend that you include government. You only have agency boards and commissions. Um, I think the statute was um drafted following um New York statute. So they may not have departments, but um certainly, um you know, I really appreciate the deport uh support from um uh Department of Transportation, I'm assuming DHS. But you don't want to leave them out of this requirement, so please think about including the phrase department. Also, one large comment, um when you 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 may get a lot of requests to have a really small um ethnic groups. So for example, you know, I know in one discussion, there was a proposal for Fijians and you know, I want to acknowledge Fijians, but I want to say when I went to look at the census data, there were approximately eight hundred, and I think of Fijians in Hawaii in twenty eighteen. So if as you refine this, you might want to think about, okay, who are we going to track? Is there a census number? Certainly, you don't want to go below ten thousand in a state like Hawaii. But is there a census number, keeping in mind that, you know, there may only be, you know, six or eight thousand Kofa residents? So keep it low, but don't go so low.
Okay, no, thank you for that. That's something we'll hopefully blend in the committee report, that observation. Thank you, Pat. Appreciate you being here and testifying. Uh we also have late from Agnes Malate, individual in support. That's all we receive from individuals who signed up to testify. Um are there any on the audience or the world of Zoom wishing to testify as well? If not, members, are there any questions of the testifiers? If not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is, let's see. We have Senate Bill eleven ninety-six relating to boards and commissions. We did not receive any testimony on this measure, members. So with your indulgence, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight. First up, Mona Moriarty, Executive Director of DCCA Office of Consumer Protection. He is not here anymore, so you want to stand up, stand in for him? Oh, you got your own coming up. Okay, well, you're gonna maybe pick on him and have him do it. Anyway, Nadine Nando, Director of DCCA.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nadine Nando, on behalf of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We stand on our written testimony opposing.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate that. Benjamin Kreps, O'Brien E., Deputy Attorney General, in G's office.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. The department has submitted written comments and does not take a policy position on the proposed transfer, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Esther Brown, RICO.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am Esther Brown, and I'm a Complacent Enforcement Officer for RICO. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I did submit written comments on the bill, which um I stand on, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you for being here. So we appreciate you being in person. Uh we have late, oh, sorry, we have testimony from Stephen Levens, individual, however.
He is right there.
Oh, there you are. Hello there, former OCD Director.
Hi, how are you?
Doing good.
I'm Steve Levens, former Executive Director of the State of Hawaii Office of Consumer Protection. And my opposition to this bill is based on doing consumer protection in the state of Hawaii for over thirty years, of which about twenty years I was the Executive Director. You know, about fifty years ago, the legislature in its wisdom created the Office of Consumer Protection. And as a result of that, Hawaii has frankly some, if not the most strong consumer protection laws in in the country. If you look at comparison with other states, like from the National Consumer Law Center, Hawaii generally comes on top. And that's not a coincidence. The reason for that is because the Office of Consumer Protection has consistently been a strong advocate for consumers. And that's by statute. So OCP is not concerned about businesses per se. We're not concerned about other entities. Our mission is to advocate for consumers. And as you probably know, over the years, when there were hearings relating to consumer protection matters, invariably, the only advocate for consumers at this hearing, at the hearings generally is someone from the Office of Consumer Protection. Hawaii is different from a lot of other jurisdictions in which you have strong independent entities that advocate for consumers. There isn't something like that here in Hawaii. It is a critical element in order for the legislature to operate and for for the government to serve consumers properly to to retain the Office of Consumer Protection as an independent entity from the Attorney General's office, which has other considerations than the Office of Consumer Protection has. So it ain't broke. There's no need to fix something that's not broke. It's worked for fifty years. Don't mess with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Levens. Appreciate your testimony, passionate testimony. Uh that's all we have on the testifiers list. Is there anybody we'd like to come testify, Mr. Moriarty?
Chair, thank you, and I I apologize uh that I missed. Evidently, I was called the first time around and I wasn't here. That was because I was testifying in another room on a consumer measure. Uh so my apologies for that. To Mr. Levin's point, I appreciate the importance of the Office of Consumer Protection and the responsibility that we have to advocate on on behalf of consumers uh before this body. Uh it's a responsibility we take seriously.
Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate you being here. So that's all we received uh on this uh agenda written. Anybody else in the audience, world of Zoom, wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? A quick question, Director, Sub Director, OCP. Oh, OCP, sorry. It's been a while. Seen Steven's in the flashback day-to-day. First condos and now him. Uh, real quickly, so um I guess, are you guys able to freely and fully litigate? And you know, as in the OCP, uh the way you stands now, or you know, I guess I'm trying to discern that moving you under the Attorney General's office would give you more powers to be able to litigate on behalf of consumers insofar as the present rule now. I mean, need some feedback on that?
Yeah, our enforcement powers under Chapter four eighty-seven are pretty broadly crafted so that we are able to bring actions where we determine it's in the consumer's interest. The Attorney General, a- as the previous testifier alluded to, has broad powers over state laws of general application. But for purposes of protecting consumers, we have a good deal of authority and we I, you know, we think we wield it pretty effectively.
Could you go to court and litigate?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if he does have those powers to be able to go to court on behalf of consumers and pursue action at judicial level?
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. And your attorney, no, no other questions? Okay. We'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is Senate Bill three eighty-nine. Uh first up, we have Dane Tree Portolus. I'm putting her last name, EA of State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Annabelle Doherty. I am the intern here on behalf of the council. Uh we stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for hanging out and being here with us. Kirby Shaw, ED Disability Communication Access Board, DCA. Written in support. Naomi Manuel, Executive Director, epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii. Written in support. We have Louis Erdishek, Hawaii Disability Rights Center.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Oh, there he is.
It's my pleasure to be testifying in front of you and your committee. I just want to add my voice. Uh I will admit, I was actually not that aware of this issue until uh until recently. And so one of our clients actually brought this to my attention, and so we decided to try to get more involved and and urge support. But if you think about it, it kind of makes a lot of sense. I mean, right, we have all these rooms where you can you can take your baby and and have your baby get changed, but you have a a lot of adults with with disabilities, and they simply are too big, they can't fit on those changing stations. And so obviously, this impacts their ability to get out and enjoy day-to-day life in the community. So whatever you could do, uh whether it's this bill and or anything else to kind of further that along, I think would be very good. So thank you. We really appreciate that.
Hey, thank you for being here, sir. We appreciate your Zoom testimony. Uh we've received testimony from several individuals. Uh there are some who've noted they'd be here in person, so I'll call them out first. First up, Jerry Sugano.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jerry Sugano. I am the mom of two children with special needs, amazing children. My daughter loves to be out in the community, my son not so much. Um but we're here today in proud support, um strong support for Senate Bill three eighty-nine. Conventional American toilets, like the ones here at the Hawaii State Capitol, are not accessible to many individuals. Individuals like my daughter are incontinent and they can't utilize these restroom facilities. Universal changing accommodations would enable non-infant children and seniors to have a hygienic place to change their incontinent supplies by way of a height-adjustable changing table that can bear the weight of an adult as well as an infant. Um those, like our family, who can't um, like our daughter, who can't utilize these facilities, must decide whether to how to plan their day, or we have to decide whether to change our daughter upright in a handicap stall, or we just don't take her out at all. States like Arizona, California, and New Hampshire have enacted laws requiring accommodations for adults. And across the US, you see airports moving in this direction as well. We humbly ask that consideration be given for all individuals who um to have sanitary conditions as you plan and govern our future public improvements and services to ensure privacy and dignity for all. Thank you very much.
For being here and testifying. We do really appreciate it. Uh next up, we have Austin Konashiro, individual.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Austin Konashiro, and this bill is important because children like my sister, they are heavier than babies who use the infants, the infant tables. So without a place for her to change, then she's not able to be out for long periods of time. And this bill will help me support other other seniors as well, like my grandma used to be like my sister. And I strongly thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for being here and testifying in person. We greatly appreciate it. Uh, let's see, so that was the last individual who said they were going to be here in person, so I just want to note for the record that we have Nikki and Yi, and we have Sarah Kern, um let's see, Jennifer Tevez, Lisa Ankonashiro, Gerald Silva, Lacy Shima Bakuru, Sheena Metz, all individuals written in support. I want to know there was opposition, individual testimony from Victor Ramos. Uh that is all we have on three eight nine. Is there anybody in the audience or the world of Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions of the testifiers? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, Senate Bill six six six, Don Chang, Chairperson, DLR.
Rob Hough with DLR Vision Force Training Wildlife. We stand on our testimony with comments.
Okay, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it. Uh, let's see, we've received numerous pieces of testimonies from individuals all in support. There was a one suggested amendment or a couple that came up that are pretty interesting. Um are any of them here in the audience, the world of Zoom, who wish to testify in the measure? Okay, uh seeing none.
There's somebody here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry if I mis-skip you.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, uh which Louis Acton issued for essential services. Uh, I apologize, um acting for uh Keith Regan had uh to go to another meeting. And I apologize for our late testimony. Probably wasn't typing fast enough. But we stand by our late testimony and uh available for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much for being here and better late than ever. So I also want to note, Tammy Lee, yes, DOT did submit late testimony, so um I want to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Chair McKelby, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. Um, the Department of Transportation supports the intent of this measure. Uh we provide some comments and concerns as a basis to including public highways in the measure um for safety concerns.
No, thank you so much for that testimony and that amendment. Appreciate it. Now, is there anybody else in the audience or Zoom land who wishes to testify? Seeing none, members of the committee, any questions of the agencies that are here to testify? Oh, yeah, first, uh we'll go with Senator Guy and then yourself.
Chairman of DLR. I'm trying to understand the the necessity for this bill. I assume it just the more fruit trees we have, people can go and pick fruit and enjoy whatever the fruit is. But should we be concerned about people who are going to just pick the fruit and get a whole basket full of it and just go to Chinatown and sell it?
Um, that might be one concern. I mean, having more fruit trees on the landscape is something that we definitely want to promote, but as we uh stated in our uh our testimony, and this is kind of our mantra, the right tree in the right place. There's many different factors. And one of them might be uh public access, commercial use, um that you would want to consider when planting a tree in a in a public place that may have that uh sort of um issue associated with it.
It looks like you have like a really big mango tree. You really can't get to the mango. There's thirty feet up there. It falls and it rocks. That could create health concern as well as like just nobody wants to step on a rotting mango, right? So you slip. I mean, there's some liability concerns with this idea. Is is would DLR be? I mean, is that is a liability a concern as well as having maintenance people to go up and pick up rotting fruit on the ground?
I think there's a wide variety of concerns and a situation where you may not want a fruit tree. Despite the fact that we want to promote more fruit trees on the landscape, there might be specific places like the side of a highway where you literally really wouldn't want people going to access the fruit because of safety issues. Fall- uh falling fruit could also be an issue. I think that there's a lot that you have to look at every situation specifically and see what tree. and see what tree is right for that situation.
If you know what, I'm not going to ask.
Okay, no worries. There's a liability in it. Let's see, nothing else on 666? Okay, finally, Senate Bill 1121. Charlotte Yamucci, Director, Legislative Reference Bureau. Just comments from them, and that's all the testimony we received on 1121. Anybody else in the audience? Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, obviously can't ask any questions since there's nobody here. So with that, I believe we've reached the end of the agenda. We will recess for decision-making. Thank you everybody. Welcome back to the Government Operations Committee. A lot of bills on the agenda, so let's just go right to it. First up, Senate Bill 1135 relating to procurement. This bill simply takes us out of the outlier category, puts us in conjunction with the other seven states that have bond protests. So we're going to go ahead and go as-is. Western's comments, if not Vice Chair, as-is, 1135.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 1135 as-is. From McKelby?
Yes.
Vice Chair both sides. Lieutenant Torres, excuse, 1135.
Yes.
Senator Awah, yes, measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up is 1138, procurement again, only one testimony, SPO. They supported it, no amendments requested. So recommendation is as-is. Members, questions or comments on the measure? If not, Vice Chair, as-is.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 1135 as-is. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, next up, 1129. We're going to go ahead and defer time certain Tuesday, February 14th, 3:00 PM to address the issue that was raised by one of the testifiers. Next up, Senate Bill 415 relating to wages. We're going to go ahead and adopt the recommended amendments of DCA, which reflects a compromise made among the stakeholders. There was one concern that was raised as well. So we're going to add a defective date of 2112 so that could possibly be examined by the next committee, CPN. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 415, SD1.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 415 with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 1416, we're going to take the auditor's recommended amendments to break them out into a separate section for their standing performance audits that they do. So there's a hearing on them. And we're going to add a defective date of 2112 so that point can be discussed by the next committee. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, SD1.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 1416 with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Aloha. 1253, time certain, Tuesday, the 14th, in this room, 3:00 PM. Next up, we're going to go ahead and we're going to Senate Bill 991 relating to public records. We want to keep this conversation going. And the fact that we passed this last year kind of shows that the legislature's intent on this measure. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to pass this measure with the addition of two FTEs and $185,000 in funding. And because of this addition, we're going to go ahead and add a defective date of 2112. Members, questions? Yes, oh, yeah. Oh, please, yes, sorry.
Can we put in the committee report that the request has been made of Mr. Black to provide us how much Civil Beat was charged for all of their record requests last year?
Okay, we can do that. Any other questions or comments, members, on the bill? If not, Vice Chair, 991, Senate Draft 1.
Chair's recommendations to pass this measure with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much. 828, Certification of Documents. We have a few questions that popped up in the hearing. So with your indulgence, we're going to follow up. So time certain, Tuesday, February 14th, 3:00 PM in this room. Next up, Senate Bill 1509 relating to state archives. That too, a few issues popped up. We are going to move it on Tuesday, February 14th, 3:00 PM, once we get our clarifications. Finally, we have Senate Bill 811, or not finally, we have Senate Bill 811. And members, what we're going to do is we're going to adopt the Senate Draft 1. And if I can briefly explain the amendments, we're going to clarify the Purpose Clause on page three, which was offered by the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We're going to expand the number of ethnicities, utilize updated terms, e.g. removing Indo-Chinese for data collection purposes under Section 2A, and include mixed-race ethnicity options as mentioned by HCIR and UH's testimony. We're going to also insert Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights Amendment to Section 2B to read included in every report referencing ancestry or ethnic origins by a State Department, Agency, Board, or Commission. And we're going to defect date for further discussion to 2112. And the author is the one working with the testifiers who came up with these amendments. And we appreciate his work on doing this. And we also want to put in the committee report that if, it clearly states in the bill that if it is basically, if there's an issue with federal law, then that federal law basically will trump, for lack of a better word. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 811, SD1.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 811 with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Boards and Commissions, we understand that the author would like to see the governor not use holdovers indefinitely. So that's a good conversation we'd like to see continue to judiciary. We're going to just do a defective date of 2112 so that we can go ahead and move it on to them. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1196, SD1.
Recommendations to pass SB 1196 with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much, members. SD 1438, Office of Consumer Protection. I have very grave concerns about this bill. However, I understand that this is more of a discussion that should be held in the committees that have direct jurisdiction, AKA CPN and judiciary. So we're going to send it off to the OK Corral for the final showdown with a defective date of 2112. And we'll note our concerns of the committee in the committee report. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1438, SD1.
Recommendations to pass SB 1438 with amendments. If members present any no votes or reservations, so no vote for Senator Awah.
Okay, next up, 389. All testimony was in support. And so we'd like to go ahead and move this measure on as-is. Members, questions, comment? If not, Vice Chair, as-is.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 389 as-is. If members present any no votes or reservations, you're now the measure passes.
Okay, thank you very much. SB 666, a really good goal, something we like to pursue. However, given there's no funding in the measure, after talking to the author, we're going to work on a resolution and have the committee look at adopting the resolution so we can move forward on this side. Okay, and next up, we're going to go to Senate Bill 1121 relating to home set exemptions. We have to ask the author about the proposed amendment insofar as a working group being constructed instead of the underlying measure. So we're going to defer Tuesday, February 14th, 3:00 PM to discuss it with him and the other co-primary interlopers. And I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda. Thank you so much for being here for the vote. Aloha and hope the AC gets turned on.